Welcome to the Cupertino City Council Special Meeting. Today is Tuesday, February 21st, 2023. Madam City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Chow.
Here.
Councilmember Fruein.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mohan.
Here.
Mayor Way.
Here. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. We are going to our special meeting. The subject is Consider City Hall Renovation Project Update. May I have staff report, please?
Thank you, Mayor Way. I'm going to turn this staff report to Capital Improvement Project Manager Susan Michael.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, Vice Mayor. Thank you for having us tonight. We're here to hear the item concerning City Hall project renovation project. The recommended action is that the staff request City Council reaffirm the direction previously provided for the City Hall renovation project. I'm going to read an excerpt from the staff report, and there's no presentation otherwise for now. So on January 17th, Council requested a future agenda item to reconsider the November 15th Council direction on the City Hall CIP project. Before proceeding further with the development of the CIP proposal for this coming fiscal year, staff requests confirmation from City Council regarding the November 15th, 2022 direction. That direction was to direct staff to include the City Hall renovation, including full seismic retrofit, MEP IT, interior finishes, and layout complete refurbishment at the level of California Building Code Structural Risk Category 4 for approximately $27.5 million. As we were meant to include that as part of the fiscal year 2023-2024 proposal for CIP. Council is aware that this direction followed the recommendation from the City Hall Project Subcommittee that was created in July 2022 and included Councilmembers Moore and Willie. So as a little background, the city of Cupertino began exploring the possibility of a capital project focused on replacing or renovating City Hall in 2005 after it was discovered that the 1986 renovation of the building had errors in the structural calculation such as seismic, such that the seismic retrofit was probably not sufficient to withstand a significant seismic event. What we've learned since then and since five different analysis reports have been done that reached the same conclusion is that the building needs to be seismically retrofit, and the HVAC and other infrastructural systems are well past their useful life, and they need to be renovated. To date, since 2015, there have been numerous options reviewed and analyzed. The Subcommittee considered, one, a seismic upgrade to the existing building, two, renovations to the existing building, three, replacement of the existing building, otherwise a new building, and replacement of other elements that support ongoing city operations. As you know, the Subcommittee recommended that the CIP included a new project for the City Hall building that is a full interior renovation of the existing building and renovation of the exterior to the degree that it supports seismic and energy efficiency upgrades. So on November 15th, 2022, Council directed staff, as mentioned, to proceed with that project for approximately $27.5 million, and we are here to ask you to confirm that direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Now we are going to for council questions. You each have, I believe, five minutes? Thank you. Do we have council would like to ask questions? If not, we can go to public comment. Seeing none, let's go to Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, and thank you, Susan, for the for the report, and I really appreciate all the work that went into the City Hall Subcommittee. We had a really thorough discussion. I had turned in written communications for this item, which I which I don't see in the packet, and I have just resent them to the clerk. So the recommendation from meeting five, which was October 21st, 2022, was the recommendation from staff in the report we were given was recommended proceeding with the following projects, the full renovation of the City Hall building, seismic HVAC IT interiors, et cetera, budgeting $26 million, and to consider upgrading to an essential facility standards. And we discussed parking behind Community Hall, budgeting $350,000, and scope and budget to be confirmed. And as part of the CIP program discussions for fiscal year '23 and '24, consider hiring consultants to develop the schedule and requirements for City Hall. And there were other considerations in that report, and one was the CD-TFA audit, the potential for substantial short and long-term impacts. Have we gotten the results of the CD-TFA audit to know if that is still impacting this project? That's my first question. Thank you.
Mayor Way, I'll take that question. Councilmember Moore, we have not received any update from CD-TFA.
So pardon, through the through the mayor, so has anything changed for the other considerations portion of the report that was given to the Subcommittee?
I don't believe that was part of the research for this item, so we don't have any further investigation or analysis for that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Councilmember Chow, please.
Thank you. Actually, I did request a financial situation to be considered together with this item, but the staff didn't think that's relevant, although I my question is, 2015 Council decision that Council later dropped the City Hall project because they couldn't get the cost down to $40 million from the estimated $70 million at that time. But the Council, I think, had the option of just doing renovation, but then they choose to only do new City Hall, which was why the cost couldn't come down. Could you confirm that there was actually option for renovation at the time?
Through the mayor. In 2015, looking through the past reports, there were at least five different options that were considered by the consultants, including renovations to different levels. They did end Council's choice at the end of the research phase was to proceed with a new building.
And then even when the Council asked the staff to consider option to bring down the cost, they did not consider renovation. And my next question is, I am actually surprised, I didn't know about the City Hall budget amendment that was approved by 2018 Council on October 16th. On that same agenda, there is also budget amendment for Performing Arts Center. So those two were, I think, were after the Council approved the vocal specific plan, which includes a show of City Hall and a show of Performing Arts Center. I asked the staff, but couldn't, you didn't really address the question, was that City Hall budget amendment for the show that actually is located on vocal site?
Sorry, through the mayor, I can't confirm, I'm not sure of the history. I know that there have been various levels of funding that have been allocated to the City Hall project, and some of it has been defunded over the years. Presently, we are carrying $500,000 for feasibility of City Hall and another $500,000 for the interim City Hall, and other other things have been defunded at this point.
So Mayor Way, if I can clarify, so staff has focusing the staff report for this item to ask Council to confirm your decision from last November. We did not spend too much time doing research on what happened in 2015 or 2018. I understand the question came to us yesterday, and we did the best we can to provide the answer to your questions.
Okay, thank you. So I let's go to public comment right now. Madam City Clerk, do we have anybody here?
Yes.
Sorry. Councilmember. I still need to get to you still.
So I note in the the budget at a glance that city staffing has grown by about 40 full-time equivalents in the course of the period from 2011 until the present. Do you have a forecast, anyone on staff, as to how much we expect staffing to grow in the next 10 to 15 years?
Sure, I'll take that. Through the mayor, we don't, and that's going to be part of the analysis to evaluate as part of the renovation, especially if you acknowledge that we're coming out of COVID post-pandemic. Staffing for a City Hall and also other facility may change, given that we do allow alternative work schedule and telework, so the actual need for having enough square footage will have to be reevaluated.
And any more questions? Councilmember Fruein? Okay, do you have any questions? Okay, so let's go to public comments right now, and you have a question? Okay.
Following up on the the issue of staffing, there was a report presented to the Subcommittee regarding staffing, and there were estimates provided. I don't know if you are able to screen share that or if the city clerk is able to do that. I included all of the reports that were given to the Subcommittee in the written communications for this item, because I, you know, I feel as though we're in some ways retracing the steps which the Subcommittee went through at this time, and there were well over 150 slides that we we reviewed in the presentations, including the seismic design and what had happened over the years. And I don't know if if Susan would like to go over that, but essentially, you know, the structure was built in 1965, and we'll fast forward to 1986 timeframe, '86, '87, when they did the seismic upgrade, they had errors in their calculations, the engineers did, and so it was not a perfect seismic upgrade, and those mistakes were found in 2005 and '06. And, you know, fast forward to today, the the building is not designed to Tier Four, but I do want to bring up one thing that happened during during the Subcommittee's work, and that was there was a request, and I think it came from Councilmember Willie, to see all the different possibilities where the EOC could be located, and it ended up being 1,300 square feet prime location over at the Torrey Avenue building. So going back to the staffing, we had the 1,300 square feet area that used to be the Council chambers, which has now been freed up, and the city mayor is no longer, no longer has an office there, so that office space was taken over by, I believe, the manager, and the City Council used to have an office, and as of December was also removed, and that has been taken over by one of the directors as well. So if if either the city clerk or Susan are able to pull up the slides which discuss the staffing levels, because those calculations were actually worked out with a projection for what would be at City Hall.
Okay, so I think this is a question time, so if there's no question, I'd like to open public comment, and we can come back to it.
Well, the question is with regards to staffing, and the the city manager might not be aware that those calculations were actually done and presented to the Subcommittee, so I'm hoping that staff will provide them for some clarification. Thank you.
Through the mayor, so Councilmember Moore, I was aware of the staffing allocation that was provided to the Subcommittee, and I also understand that that was fluid at the time. So with staff coming back post-COVID, now that the governor has released the Declaration for Emergency, with the new City Hall or the new renovation project, we will have to evaluate the staffing needs. As you mentioned, there has been some renovation going on within City Hall. We're also allocating a new Council offices for your use, so there will definitely be some changes to the layout. We're also proceeding with the Torrey Avenue renovation. So much of that has been going. If Susan's available to bring that staff slide up, go for it, but again, I am aware of that staffing projection, and it's a very high-level elementary kind of a projection. Regardless of what decision Council decides to go tonight, we will have to revisit that issue regardless.
Through the mayor, I'm wondering how many offices are also available over at the Public Works yard, and if there is some duplication with regards to some members of Public Works having offices at that location, and what reconfiguration could happen there as well? Thank you.
I don't know if we have done any analysis at the Public Works Corp yard at this time. I am not aware of any of those work.
So if the video team can share my screen, I can.
I think, well, I have.
But I can also say that the Service Yard right now, Service Center, that is a project many years ago, we looked at completely tearing that down and starting over. It is well, it's not very well laid out, it's not very well used. There are no people that I'm aware of that have offices or desks at both locations. There's not a duplication there.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to public comment. Do we have any cards here?
Yes, Mayor, we have one blue speaker card in house, and we have three hands raised in Zoom, and I would just note that per the new City Council procedures, if you wish to provide a comment, please have your hand raised, your speaker card submitted in the first nine minutes.
Thank you.
Okay, and Connie, please approach podium, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Way, Vice Mayor Mohan, Councilmembers and City Manager. We should definitely be looking to build a City Hall and Civic Center that meets our needs for the next 50 years. We should invest in our city, our staff, and our residents, and use this as an opportunity to build a great facility that truly matches the greatness of our city. A simple renovation would respect the safety from earthquake for people who use the building, especially staff who are here every day, yes, and commissioners, who will be required to meet in person. However, it would not resolve many other issues for a building that is 60 years old, built to serve a smaller city in 1963 with thousands fewer residents. We are literally bulging at the seams. Needs include more workspace, more meeting space, more natural lighting, ADA accessibility, and an HVAC system that works. I encourage the city to revisit the 2022 meetings, meeting space decision, excuse me, I skipped, and choose a long-term investment rather than a short-term repair. As this new City Hall is considered, I also urge you to think about adding native trees and plants on the properties surrounding the City Hall. This will provide an example for all residents about climate change and how each of us can be a part of the solution, solutions such as actions on our own properties in keeping with ideas from Cupertino's Climate Action Plan 2.0. Thank you for this time to speak.
Thank you, Connie, and so we have no further speaker cards in Community Hall. We'll move to Zoom, and our first three speakers are Gary Latshaw, Peggy Griffin, and Jean Bedord. Welcome, Gary.
Hello, thank you for this opportunity to to speak to you this evening. So my name is Gary Latshaw. I'm a resident of Cupertino. I am also the primary author of the letter that Sierra Club sent with regard to the first presentation in, I won't say the first, the presentation in November. There was no discussion of issues having to do with climate change, no discussion of conserving from the standpoint of of life cycle analysis of climate. Moreover, just from a cost perspective, there was no consideration of a life cycle cost of what a new building versus a renovated building is. Such cost analysis will be difficult to make because the climate will change. It will probably approach the temperature profiles during the summer of Phoenix. Phoenix may become unoccupiable. And so I really encourage the Council to have perhaps somebody more expertise in modern designs that taken this into account, taking advantage of sunlight for heating, the cooling that happens naturally in the area through the marine layer, and perhaps the use of solar panels, et cetera. I was very disappointed in the first presentation in November, I shouldn't say the first, but also very disappointed, because I have given public presentations before, actually for the Air Resources Board, and invariably they answer in writing objections brought forth by the public, and I don't even know where my letter, or the Sierra Club letters has come. So thank you for your time, and I really encourage to have somebody with a broader expertise than apparently exists in the city to look at this. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Next, we have Peggy Griffin, followed by Jean Bedord, followed by Lisa Warren. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, City Council and staff. I had a prepared speech, but what I really want to tell you is, when when people go to buy a house, they first figure out how much they can afford, and I'm not seeing this. There were several councilmembers bringing up questions about financing, and that wasn't looked at. The last City Hall, the brand-new one, was so over the top. It, that's why it didn't pass. It was too much money. First, figure out how much you can afford before you even think about this. What's stable? Right now, we are in a recession. The city may lose half the sales tax it currently receives. Costs, both taxes, fees, food, fuel, et cetera, are increasing, and residents can't afford to pay additional costs. So adding something to the residents' fees is not going to go over. You have to stay physically responsible. I support the renovation and the the Risk Category 4 for the the amount. My concern is cost. I don't want it over the top. I don't want a palace. We don't have, we're not kings. We want something that is usable, that is safe for the employees and the visitors, and that does the job. And right now, that 2015 Civic Center analysis is eight years old. It's outdated. Right now, parking, there's not as many employees coming in, we use teleconferencing. Life has changed significantly since the pandemic, and I think the renovation way is the better way to go, physically responsible. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Next, we have Jean Bedord, followed by Lisa Warren. Welcome, Jean.
Good evening, Mayor Way and Councilmembers. My name is Jean Bedord, and I'm a resident of Cupertino. I am here to urge you to change the direction given by the previous Council. There's no question that Cupertino needs to address its City Hall problem. It was built in 1965, to 1965 Building Codes, serving a city less than 20,000 people. Cupertino is now three times larger, as expected, to increase an additional 20% or so in the future with the new housing development. In addition, City Hall was found to be seismically unsafe in 2005, but councils consistently kick the can down the road, ignoring city liability. It makes no sense to spend $27.5 million and end up with, well, an old building that's not up to current building standards and remains energy inefficient. Furthermore, it also ignores the identified need for more library parking, given the expected increase in library usage with the library expansion and increase in population. The current building is also not aligned with city goals on sustainability. You know, we're trying to see ourselves as leaders. This is not leading. I urge City Council to reject the cheap option and the cap and reopen other options in financing. Sunnyvale, our neighbor, has a new City Hall that's state-of-the-art. Shouldn't we find out how they managed to do it? Why should Cupertino have a second-class City Hall and Civic Center? I urge you to reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Next, we have our final speaker on Zoom, Lisa Warren, and then we have one more speaker card in Community Hall. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you. So I'm, I was happy at the time with this decision to support the renovation with the Risk Category 4 for several reasons. The Subcommittee did a deep dive. They came to conclusions that that was a good idea. It didn't create the humongous cost, which everyone knows needs to be reevaluated at this time, because it's not going to be near the $70 million from before, it's going to be far higher. Where does that money come from? If the residents aren't allowed to vote on this, it seems really misguided to have five to three councilmembers decide that that's what's going to happen. When this has been hashed over, there's been a well-qualified Subcommittee making decisions and calculations and decisions and really going through the process. I am insulted by the fact that we have anyone in the city that thinks we need to compete with another city, and I think it's misplaced and inappropriate. The mayor has stated in, well, publicly in a chamber address, that she's very competitive and went right into the Sunnyvale Civic Center, which is far good, many of the things that Sunnyvale's doing, that there's more money going to be spent for them to finish. Why, I mean, maybe it's just the stress-filled push your kids to do whatever it takes, even if it is detrimental to them and a family to, maybe it's that mentality, but that mentality really needs to change. We have no reason to compete with Sunnyvale. If Sunnyvale can give information, that's one thing, but the attitude that Cupertino would be second-class if they didn't have something better than Sunnyvale is ludicrous, and this goes for anything moving forward, any decision moving forward. And I would stress, we should not, we cannot depend on a developer making backdoor deals to try to fund something that, if put to put to vote, many people or most people may not want. We need to do this without outside influence, do what's right for us in the best possible way, and that's, I guess I'm out of time. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa, and so we will return to Community Hall. We have one final speaker, Jennifer Griffin. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening. I hadn't meant to come down, but our power is out in Rancho Rinconada, and it's been on and off for the last two hours, so please be kind to people who may be having to try to come in. I also was at the dentist today. I have to have a tooth pulled tomorrow, so it is important to me to be here, and I'm got painkillers, so I'm good to go. Anyway, you know what? I have sat through countless hours on the City Hall renovation. I mean, we're going back to 2010, and we've had plans, then we had a developer have plans, then we had another plan, et cetera, et cetera, and we, one thing is for sure, the building has to be secured for earthquakes. You saw what happened in another, two other countries. Those buildings. Those buildings, there's a very, very heavy Spanish tile roof on the building. I had originally thought that it might be a good idea, I mentioned this probably seven years ago, that they put a second story. In my mind is overbuild so that you have room in the years to come. Cupertino is a powerhouse nationally, a city worldwide, and it will continue to grow. You don't have companies like Apple and Steve Jobs and not become the face of the world. In this situation, we need to have our staff protected so they're not going to have problems in the new building. I'm very happy that the city purchased the annex building because Cupertino should have city halls that are appropriate to what we are. I think Cupertino is the center mark of the entire Silicon Valley. Yes, I actually went by a building project Sunnyvale has today when we were going to the dentist on El Camino. They have a big pile of debris that's near their City Hall. I, I don't know what to tell you, but I'd say we, we're gonna, never mind what our governor says, we're going into penny-pinching time. We have to tighten our belts. So let's stabilize the building, make sure that it's safe. We had a lot of buildings after 1989 earthquake, tech buildings that were secured. There was a brand-new one that was built over by the Apple II campus. It was in my original work group. It was brand-new. They went in and put in diagonal bracing. It is still there today. If you have to do that with the City Hall, do it. But Cupertino has a great future. I don't believe in developers dictating to our city what we do, et cetera, et cetera. That's what I like about Apple. They, they seem to like Cupertino. They like to stay here, and they don't dictate what we do. We honor them, but they do not demand things from us. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Mayor, that is our final speaker.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. I want to thank all the public comments. Now, let's bring it back to council deliberation. Does anybody want to make a motion in a second so we can deliberate? Do you have a motion, Councilmember Chow, or no?
Sorry, I do have a motion that we can then deliberate on. I need to share my screen here at some point. Okay. To see if everyone can see this.
Okay, would you like to read it, or?
Sure, so I've shared the screen. I'll go ahead and read it. My motion would be that staff would suspend all work on the City Hall renovation plan considered at the City Council meeting of November the 15th, 2022, not including the City Hall Annex project, and that staff instead would return to council with options for a new City Hall and Civic Center up to approximately 80,000 square feet, including flexible events programming spaces suitable for events hosting up to 500 people and based primarily upon options previously provided to the City Council at its meeting of November the 15th, 2022, with alternatives for such flexible events programming space at other city-owned locations to be considered as part of the City Council's March 7 consideration of the capital improvement program.
Do we have a second for it? I'll second it. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Let's open for discussion for five minutes for each council member, please. Do we have, okay, Vice Mayor Mohan?
Yeah, so I, I have had the... So I have spent several hours looking at previous reports and all the actions taken for the past several years. The only thing about the motion that Councilmember Fruen proposed was the, I saw the number 80,000 square feet, and, and my comment was that I really wanted to reconsider everything. I'm not sure 80,000 is, is, is the most relevant number we can find at this point. So, so my thinking on this is, let's look at a completely new City Hall with keeping the same things that we talked about, I think, in 2015. Was it 2015? Yes. Where the guiding principles of 2015 still apply, and I can quickly go through those guiding principles, primarily employee safety, making the City Hall much more than just a house, housing employees or city staff, making it a showcase for our community, making it a state-of-the-art building for, which, which showcases sustainability and clean energy model for efficiency. And these are all the things that we have the opportunity to incorporate into a, a new City Hall at this time. And, and so I would like a, a complete redesign and re, review of, of this entire project starting from the ground up, but primarily employee safety was my, my first concern. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor Mohan, and then Councilmember Moore.
Yes, thank you. So, I was wondering if Susan could remind us of what the square footage of the current City Hall is and the Torrey Annex?
Through the mayor? Yes, please. The existing building is approximately 24,000 square feet. That includes a large mechanical space. So, the existing, the Annex Building over at the corner of Torrey and Pacifica is approximately 5,000 square foot footprint. It's got a small, little room upstairs.
Okay, thank you. And also, through, through the mayor, one of the things that the, the subcommittee made a note of was that we found that it was actually, and please correct me, that it was actually less expensive to purchase another building, to purchase a property than to add on to the structure. And then also with regards to that, we had looked at the parking situation and how to expand parking. What in your estimation, just ballpark figure, would an 80,000-square-foot City Hall and Civic Center with 500 guests require for parking? What would you envision there? Because I know that there was an original suggestion to have a three-story parking garage off to, to our, our east. So if you had some idea about that, I'd like to hear it, and yeah, we'll start with that.
Thank you. I'm not very good about doing calculations on the fly. I believe in the previous funding information, the cost estimates that we did, we had cost per square foot, that those numbers were very rough, and as I added a footnote onto the written communications that we sent through yesterday, these numbers are really for comparison only, but there are cost per square foot numbers in there that we used. And, I'm sorry, which, so you're trying to see if it was a new building, we said is approximately $900 a square foot, times 80,000, whatever that would be, just rough.
Okay, thank you. And then for adding 500, a 500-seat facility at this location, what could you estimate would be the, the parking requirements for, for that?
So, there's a number of ways to handle parking, as you know, the, we looked at all the ways that it's been talked about in the past. There's underground parking, there's above-surface parking, but there's also the possibility of leasing space off-site to cover parking as well, and that would have to be part of the agreement. But I, I couldn't begin. I mean, the, when we did the parking calculations, I think it was another $230, $230 a square foot, and I'd have to figure out how much that ends up to be. So, yes, the numbers are getting there. So, I would, if I may, address the funding topic that's come up to date. We are coming back to council to confirm direction. We didn't have, you could say, questions or direction to look into anything in particular, so we don't have answers on the specifics about funding, so there's only so much that we can address at this point. Thank you.
And, and one more. So, the Regnar Creek Trail has not yet opened, and, and as we know, that was pretty controversial. So, I think before adding a large parking structure, which this would require, would even, should even be on the table, I think that community should definitely be noticed about this because that's going to cause shadow, shading, noise, and, you know, you name it. And also, we're, we're not taking into consideration that Danza College is looking for feedback right now for their new performing arts replacement, I should say, for the Flint Center, which I think might be around 1,500 seats. So, I'm not really sure why we would want to be redundant on that in a particularly congested area, which already has a parking problem. So, I would like to make a substitute motion that we, that we reaffirm the direction previously provided for the City Hall renovation project because of its, it is fiscally conservative, it is updating HVAC, and the, moving to a seismic Tier IV level. And so, these, and with regards to the energy efficiency, these are all, all going to be addressed. It just wasn't the scope of the project at the time when it came through the, the subcommittee and back to council. So, I'm hoping I have a second. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a substitute motion on the floor. May I have a, do we have a second?
I will second after I... I will second after I got my question answered for the proposed motion.
Okay. Come on, more chance, your turn.
Okay. So, I think it's important to understand how much money we have and how many other projects the city still have to pay for. The service center mentioned that it needs updating. A lot of community centers in the various parks also need updating. The sports center, all of these need renovation. And I think I have asked the staff for this delayed, there are delayed maintenance. These, these totals are probably 100, 200 million dollars. I had asked for this to always be presented with CIP projects so we know how many we need to pay for down the line. And so, I think the, the new council members probably do not have good visions for Cupertino. So, I would like to understand from the, the councilmember Fruen and the mayor, Hauway, and, and Sheila Mohan, Councilmember Mohan, what's your vision for Cupertino? Why do you see we need to, 80,000 square feet of, of its space? How do you, do you see our population will grow from the current 60,000? And so, what's, what are you envisioning? I keep hearing 50-year plans, so what, what's your vision in 50 years for Cupertino?
So, I'm not gonna, I'm gonna ask a few questions on the staff. I'm gonna take my five minutes here.
So, you are not answering my question?
Sort of, the, the same thing, okay. So, I...
Because I think the council deliberation should be not always us talking to the public, but...
But I have a few questions first.
Should be, okay.
Okay. So, the, with Councilmember Fruen's recommendation is up to 80,000, 80,000 square feet. Does that give staff clear directions? It could have a few options, could up to 60, 70, 80, or does that give staff flexibility to come up with design or recommendations?
Thank you. Since we are in process right now developing the CIP proposal, it's due on Friday, I, we can put a placeholder in the CIP program. We do not have the time or resources to develop anything of note before the end of this fiscal year. So, we, like I said, we could put a placeholder in place, and before we can continue that, that discussion when we come back with the CIP.
Okay, yeah. So, I, I see the, propose, the motion has some flexibility in there, so it's up to 80,000. It doesn't mean it has to be 80. That's my first question. My second question is, I know there are a lot of questions on financing, but this is just to put a, a study on CIP. The financing part will have to come later with research and, and reports. Is that how the staff envisioned this?
I believe that there's more than one part to this. There's the CIP part, which is, here's your project, go build it. But there's also the funding and the real estate questions that, what makes sense? Where's the, what are the projection growths? What's supportable? What's efficient? So, what might be a good next step is to hire consultants who have that market and real estate expertise, as well as perhaps architects who can give designs that meet that expertise. So, I can see that would be what the next year might take up. But yeah, then you would get to something that maybe is more defined in terms of cost.
Okay, thank you. So, that would, analysis will come later. Right now, to answer Councilmember Chow's question, I do believe we need to have more options. I understand, and you know, I went through the, the process and I, I learned everything. I know what we did before. So, I do believe that there are a few things we need to consider. You know, the asset value analysis on renovation and new building, there is a difference on whether, whether we do a renovation or a new building. And the long-term return on renovation and new building, these are all things we need to consider. How about the lead standard and green initiative champion on a renovation or a new building? And alignment with our CAP 2.0 on the renovation versus a new building? So, I, I'm gonna say that I did vote no on this project when it came to the council in November. So, I, I really believe that we need to do a little bit more research, open up more options before we can decide. What I see is, it doesn't mean that we're not going to do the $27 million. So, this is how I envision the processes. We need to have more options. So, you, you get your time to, to talk? Okay. So, I'm answering your question is my vision, or why, why I advocate for opening up this for more research, to have more financing part of it, so we get a more, a, a broader picture. And I want to say again, this is not just my vision. We got a lot of comments after we decided on this, that people are coming in the, in the City Council meetings and talking about, you know, versus a renovation, is that the value we want to put? So, I do believe we need to have more options, a little bit more research, a little bit more options for us to take a look at the whole thing more holistically. And I do like Councilmember Fruen's suggestion in the motion, that doesn't have to be in the City Hall, but the, the staff can come up with other locations that the city has to kind of get this whole holistic view of what we have. So, that's what I, that's what I, to answer your question, this is what I believe we need to have more in-depth study of what options are there, out there. The renovation is still an option. So, a new City Hall of how big, is, whether it's be 70,000 square feet, whether it be all in here or somewhere else, I just believe that we need to have more options. And the financing part, too. We, staff can quite answer those questions because they haven't started to done the research on financing part. So, I'm taking my time already, so. Now, I'm gonna go back to, you have a few minutes.
Councilmember Moore, can we have other people?
Councilmember Fruen or Councilmember Chow, say a little more first.
So, I, having been in, in City Hall many times, I, it's very clear to me that, that people are having to work in very tiny conditions. I think they should be working in better conditions than what they are. So, I think that, that what we have at the moment is already subpar. It needs to be improved. Looking back at the past, which is why I brought up the, the budget at a glance... Looking back at the past, which is why I brought up the, the budget at a glance, it's very clear that we are going to continue to grow our staffing needs as the city grows. We have a housing element that we are going to have to at some point pass that will facilitate the construction of, you know, four thousand five hundred and eighty-eight new homes. That's a lot of homes. It's a lot of new people. We will need people to service those people who will work for us in City Hall and elsewhere. So, I think that we deserve at this point a better building. I think we're going to need a better building. And this isn't about, you know, keeping up with the Joneses. It's about making sure that we have something that we can be proud of. I, I don't think that the building that we have right now, if it were merely renovated, is something that we can be proud of, especially if, you know, we're going to just slap on a Band-Aid for twenty-seven million dollars. I'd encourage you to go back and look at the staff report from the fifteenth because it does include the, the per-square-foot cost of each of the options. And the twenty-seven thousand, I'm sorry, the twenty-seven million dollar option which council had chosen is one of the more expensive ones on a, a per-square-foot basis, eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars per square foot. A considerably larger building that was seventy thousand square feet as compared to the twenty-four thousand square foot building that, that exists was only going to be five hundred and eighty-two dollars per square foot. So, I, I'm not really sure that, that the fiscally responsible option is the one that's simply less expensive on a total ticket value. I think it's the one that's going to give us the best value for money in the long run. I don't think that the current building meets that. And I think that we can satisfy some of our other goals and plans as a city, for example, making a much more environmentally sustainable building, et cetera, and what other, you know, programming uses we can afford to put into the space that the community has a demand for. And one of those is a larger gathering space. Civic Center Plaza seems like a good place to be able to add it. If it's not, and, and staff has some useful alternatives for where such a gathering place could be, then I'm trying to give them that option in the course of the motion. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, council member Fruen. And then, council, I do, I wanted...
Mayor Wei, can we ask a question? So, I was just wondering, council member Fruen, if we can understanding, if, if we can understand the logic behind the eighty thousand square feet so we can provide a little bit more analysis?
Sure. It's very simple. I'm simply trying to provide a, a reasonable scope for staff so that there's something concrete to come back with. Hence also the reference to utilizing the, the options that were previously presented so that we don't have to go completely back to the drawing board and we can hopefully get somewhere in the course of this year.
Thank you. Thank you. So, you still have a couple of minutes? So, council member, vice mayor Mohan?
So, my thinking on this, Mayor Wei, is that here we have a golden opportunity to do something different. None of us, I think, is going to be spending more than we have. But there are all kinds of interesting financing options available these days, and we haven't really explored that. So, my suggestion is we look at all these different options for financing, for design, for, you know, the new amenities that, that we didn't have when we did the, the previous study. And, and the market has changed. The world has changed in, in the last few years. So, there are a lot of things that we cannot take for granted, which were displayed in previous reports. So, my suggestion is let's look at the parking, which has always been an issue in, in the civic center area. Let's look at the, the parking. Let's look at community facilities, which we can accommodate. Let's make sure that the building can be flexible in terms of maybe adding later on if what we have is not sufficient, be environmentally sustainable, and, and just make sure we, we get the best bang for the buck. I don't think that there is any, any of us are going to want to build something that we cannot afford. So, so that I am not too concerned about because we are all, I think, fairly conservative and we will sort of make sure that whatever design is presented to us meets all the requirements.
Thank you, vice mayor Mohan. And council member Moore?
First, through the mayor, I'm not sure I heard the second from council member Chow regarding my substitute motion. I just want to double-check if I, if that did happen.
Council member Chow?
Um, after my comment on this...
Council member Chow would like to make some comment.
Okay, so we'll get further. Okay, so I'll make my comments now. So, for this presentation, I think it would have been particularly helpful if we had the images of the current City Hall showing the, well, perhaps I can share screen. I'm gonna try it. I haven't done this before. Let's see if I can get this here. Let's try that.
I believe it was part of the written communications package.
Yes, it's in there, and I'm sharing screen, I think. Yes, okay, there we go. All right. And then, perhaps if Susan could walk us through what we're looking at. For instance, on the right-hand side, that area in the middle of the building is the current EOC, right? And that is being relocated to the Torrey Avenue Annex, and that will have a really, actually, very neat flex space with kind of like an eagle's nest that's able to look over the, the main floor in the event of an emergency. So, that's a pretty exciting thing that came out of the, of the Subcommittee research. And now, looking at the lower floor with the, says a sixty-one seat. Now, I'm wondering if that is including the, the areas of the, the storage. You have a mapping room, mapping storage. The HVAC has multiple older structures, machine, machinery in there that would be condensed down. So, I'm trying to understand when I'm looking at the downstairs, what, what's actually being counted there because it seems like a lot of that space could be freed up and probably will be. Is that right? Yeah, okay. So, I'll get into my, my comments here. So, going back to the recommendation that came from city staff to the City Hall Subcommittee, it was to do the renovation. That was the recommendation that we were given from staff. So, this change that's happening here, I want to make it very clear that it is a change from certain members of the city council to override the staff recommendation to the City Hall Subcommittee. Want to make sure that's clear. It was also mentioned about the CDTFA audit. It is not completed and it can result in a thirty million dollar reduction in revenue each year, and we have not found out what's, what's happening with that. So, I, you know, talking about being fiscally conservative, if you're looking at a risky time, so you're not sure what's gonna happen to your revenue, the interest rates are high, this is not a time to issue bonds, and all of that needed to be taken into consideration. The city does not need to have a five-hundred-seat event space when Danza College is going to be utilizing the eight-hundred-and-ninety, I'm sorry, eight, about nine-hundred-million-dollar bond, which, which was passed a couple of years ago, in which they are going to be building an event space facility there. They've got ample parking there already. The public has not been asked what they would like to have their money spent on with a community like a new aquatics center, a new sports facility. The city, the council has kicked the can down the road on this seismic issue since first discovering the error in around two thousand five to two thousand six. And here, we're looking at spending even more money on another study. So, I hope everybody has looked at the City Hall page on the website with all of the documentation that has gone on over the years. So much money has been spent on consultants. It is, it's, it's, it's really sad, and we've gotten nowhere. So, we at least had a plan with the twenty-seven million to move on to a Tier Four seismic retrofit, secure that building, have the flexibility, if we want to move the EOC back into it, that we could do that, and improve the, the ADA issues, reconfigure all of the offices there, provide a central lights, light structure from above, change the roofing. There, there's so much that could be done to that building and make it, definitely with, with regards to the Climate Action Plan 2.0 issue, we have to be compliant with that as well. We are responsible as stewards for our community's money, and we need to support the staff and their safety. The plan that we had, the Tier Four renovation, takes care of that. We are, I'm gonna mention this again, we're in a high-interest environment and we are already paying five hundred thousand dollars per month servicing the debt that we have, and this just looks like we're trying to pile more onto it. When we need to improve the public works yard, Memorial Park, sports center, and plan for recreational areas for the future residents while the staff is often working remotely and some are working completely remotely, not even coming in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council member Chow?
So, I'd like to point out that...
I'd like to point out that the industry standard is going to, is moving to have smaller and more flexible work quarters. The current work quarter that's in the City Hall is significantly larger per, per workspace than the industry standard. I think it's like fifty percent more per employee. So, if we renovate the City Hall to utilize a more modern workspace, we actually can accommodate more employees with the same space. And also, that I would like to know what would be the delay? I think we know that staff is concerned of the earthquake safety, and with the current approved plan, we expect to finish construction in two years. That means in twenty-twenty-six, we will have a brand-new earthquake-safe City Hall. Then, with a whole new plan, that means we will need to do outreach, likely do a CQ analysis with this five hundred and with, with this many increases based on how much estimated time it will take to eventually even come up with a plan.
Through the mayor, if I can, we don't know. We don't know. I do want to emphasize that staff has been proceeding under the council's direction to renovate the project. So, we're coming back to council to reaffirm that decision, so we don't know how long the new city's...
So, with the staff's experience with other projects, you at least have an estimate?
We don't know. I mean, it, it really varies. We don't know what sort of a structure, what sort of component. We have no idea.
So, okay, then, based, based on past experience, in two thousand fifteen, that approved plan, I think, took two years of outreach, revision, eventually a council approval. And then, the council decided they couldn't come up with a financing option that works for them. So, we are going to repeat the same process and further delay the renovation of the City Hall to make it earthquake-safe. That's the current proposal. So, I would like to second council member Moore's motion to reaffirm the council's decision.
Okay, so we have a substitute motion that's being motioned by council member Moore, seconded by council member Chow. Do we have more input? So, before we vote, what I would like to emphasize is I think the timeline, the financing, that options, I would like to see those options. And I do think council member Fruen's proposal is flexible enough that the staff can come up with, you know, maybe two or three plans so that we can really look at everything that's out there that's possible. And vice mayor Mohan's suggestions that, you know, we look at what's available out there. I just believe that spend twenty-seven million dollars to renovate an old building, it is sort of a, you know, patchwork, right? So, if we want to look at something long-term for the next twenty, fifty years, I like to have some options to check it out. So, we have a motion and a second. Can we start a vote before we have any, any more comments? No? Can we get a...
I would like to comment.
Yeah, more comments?
Yes. So, I, I really appreciate council member Chow's comments, particularly with regards to earthquake and we, and the EIR issue. So, if this project is, is stalled off at this time, what will likely happen is that you will need at minimum two or three years in order to do the outreach, to start up the EIR process, to even come up with a plan, and then it would, I'm gonna think it's probably gonna be about five years from now that it would get, this project could even get started. And looking at the, the probability of an earthquake in the area, say you start in five years and you, you finish that construction in, in three years after that, it, I, I just don't think that this is, is acceptable for the, the people who are working in the building, and I don't think it's showing much consideration for them at all. So, I, again, I reaffirm the, the previous council decision. Thank you.
Comments before you vote? Go ahead. Yes, yeah, you know?
How much time do I have?
We're looking at, so maybe, let's vote first unless you have a comments on this one.
Microphone.
Was involved, have been attending council meeting since two thousand fourteen, sixteen. I find that this council in the past had considered, there was a Stevens Creek, some plan, and it was estimated to be forty million, and then fifty million, and then seventy million, and then dropped. The council keep considering plans, spending time on consultant to make up plans before they even know they can afford it. And then, after they have the plan, they first go out, imagine really big, the past council project in two thousand thirteen, the first version was going, the options were costing like two hundred million dollars. Come, came to the council after all the outreach, imagined a lot of really nice things on this, in, in this civic center space. And then, the council thought two hundred million is too much, they reduced the scope, came back, and then three options, to renovate only and up to a new City Hall, and the cost estimate was around from fifty million to seventy million. That council then choose seventy million dollars. So, I'm concerned that we are going back again, doing the same work the previous council has done and decided against because of cost, and now we are doing that again, when so we, we would further delay during the earthquake retrofit of the City Hall, which, as we know, has started since two thousand, we know since two thousand and five.
Okay.
So, are we not concerned about the safety of our city staff?
So, thank you for the history. Let's hope that we don't repeat that history. Council member Sheila Mohan, do you want to say something? No, you're good. So, please make quick so we can, yeah.
Yes, thank you. I think that's a really good point, council member Chow, and when we look at the grand jury report, the House divided, they mentioned that, that staff was concerned that the city council wasn't showing their care for their safety in the, the City Hall building. And again, we're, we're pushing this off. They're saying we have over a sixty-five percent chance of having a, a earthquake magnitude like six-point-seven or greater in our, in our future. And I, I think that we, we need to be cognizant of that fact and, and not kick this down the road. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are we ready to vote?
Yeah. So, one final comment. I think our, we should not be driven by our ego to be the best, the brightest, and to be the better than any other city. We should be driven by how much we can available, and then the current plan will, we will have a renovated, earthquake-safe City Hall by twenty-twenty-six, and that's go with that.
Council member Fruen, you light this on? No?
The vote, the vote was already begun, mayor.
So, we're ready to vote, right? Okay, let's...
Substitute motion.
Substitute motion, yes. We're looking, voting for the substitute motion. Let's vote by light.
Substitute motion. Substitute motion fails with Chow and Moore voting yes.
So, now we're going back to the council member Fruen's motion. Anybody want to make more comments? Go ahead, vice mayor Mohan.
I wanted to make a comment. While there, some of the numbers that council member Moore talked about, while many of those may be relevant and may still apply to today, there's a lot that we don't know. Things have changed dramatically in the last few years. So, my hope is that consultant will give us all these options, you know, including price and square footage and employee workforce and state of the economy in the city, in the region, and also include... And also include the option of staying with the, the recommendation that's suggested by staff, the November twenty-second recommendations.
So I'd like to add a little bit, no one is, no one, everybody cares about a staff safety, okay? So again, it goes back to what options do we have? And if we put it on the CIP plan, the options should come back hopefully pretty fast. And let's not repeat what the previous council did, you know, postponed it, get it for two years. We learn from the past. So I'm hoping that we could provide more options and let the city council and staff and also the public really get to into what options do we have. So I don't believe that's going to be a five-year delay. So that's what I believe the flexibility in Councilmember Frum's motion is, is a good way for the staff to kind of go with the CIP plan and come back with recommendations. You have more to say? Yeah, please.
Yes. So according to the Third Uniform California Earthquake Rupture Forecast Report, in the next thirty years, beginning in 2014, there is more than a ninety-nine percent chance that one or more six-point-seven or greater earthquake will strike somewhere in California. A seventy-five percent chance that one or more seven-point-oh or greater earthquake will strike Southern California, and a seventy-six percent chance one or more seven-point-zero or greater earthquake will strike in Northern California. So I just want to make sure it's on the record that I, my motion and the support that I received from Councilmember with Chow were to move forward to have a tier-four seismic-designed remodel of the building that could, that would be on the, the CIP work program for this year and get, get working on to finally show the care and concern that the city staff has mentioned in the grand jury report that they do not feel that they are getting from city council. Thank you.
Thank you. So all the more we need to work fast. So do we have any more comments before we go to a vote by light? No? So City Mayor, can we vote by light? Thank you.
The main motion carries with Chow and Moore voting no.
Okay, so our official meeting doesn't start until six forty-five. We have a break until six forty-five? All right, we have a half an hour break. Thank you. To the Cupertino City Council regular meeting, today is February twenty-first, 2023. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Please rise if you can for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Madam sitting clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Chow?
Here.
Councilmember Frum?
Here.
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Vice Mayor Mohan?
Here.
Mayor Way?
Here. Thank you. There is no close action items to report. I'd like to speak a little bit before we go to the ceremonial items. I'd like to make a short statement, Honorable February as Black History Month. Every February, the US honors the contributions and sacrifices of African-Americans who have helped shape the nation. Black History Month celebrates the rich cultural heritage, triumphs, and adversities that are an indelible part of our country's history. This year's theme, Black Health and Wellness, pay homage to medical scholars and healthcare providers. The theme is especially timing as we enter the third year of the COVID-nineteen pandemic, which has disproportionately affected minority communities and placed unique burdens on black healthcare professionals. So we like to celebrate February as Black History Month. Thank you very much. Now we're going to into our ceremony items. And first, we would like to recognize the 2022 STEM winners from the city of Cupertino who participated in the San Clara County 2022 Synopses Championship Science Fair. There are thirty-six winners from Cupertino. Let's give them a round of applause. Thank you. Our kings are certainly our best generations to come to really lead us into the future. So I'd like to invite their board member, Mr. Forrest, please come over, come up here. And all the council members are going to go and-
Could you introduce yourself?
Good evening. My name is Forrest Williams. I'm with the Santa Clara Valley Science and Engineering Fair Association. We petition the city of Cupertino to recognize the STEM winners from the Synopses Championship, the ones that live in Cupertino.
Mr. Williams, you can stand in the front.
And the city has graciously done that. So I want to thank the mayor, and I want to thank the council members. I want to thank Laura for all the work that she did putting all this together, notifying you, sending messages out to you. And I want to thank the parents and the students, most of all, for your work. You've done outstanding work, and we want to showcase that. It's the future. You own the future. We're here to guide you, to make life better for you. We've made a lot of mistakes, and we need to have you correct them as we move forward to the future. So thank you, and I want to thank you so much again. There are your students.
Well said, Forrest. I would like to congratulate all the students. You are our next generations of hope. And for quick, we could not give you each certificate, but it's in here. For a quick photo op, could all the students come up here, please? Come on up. Come on up, everybody. And then because you're young, you can kind of, you know, maybe-
All the tall.
The tall ones stand behind us. Come on up, and we'll take a quick picture. Come on, come on, yeah. There we go. Don't be shy. And if you're too tall, you can kind of stoop a little bit. Don't, don't get too, you got a picture over there. All righty.
Could we ask one of the parents to take the photograph for us, please? Thank you.
Are we doing good? Come, come closer. Come closer. All right. Parents, your turn.
So we'll hold it up for ten seconds. Ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, last three, two, one. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, City Manager. The mayor really needs to stand up. Thank you for all the students. Thank you very much, Forrest.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Maybe I'll have the city council members stay here. Our second ceremonial is for our, the fiftieth anniversary of the Wafu School of a Society, and we have two representatives here. Ms. Fusako, could you please come up? And Leona? Yes, please come up. I want to give a little shout-out. These is the best Iqibana masters that we're honoring right here. And Ms. Fusako actually taught, teaches at Fremont Union High School District's adult school. And they're going to have a beautiful display in the first week of March, Saturday and Sunday, at Quinling Community Centers. Please do see this. Every year is beautiful, but I'm pretty sure on the fiftieth anniversary, it's going to be even more spectacular. We'll just say a few words, please.
Good evening, everyone. As the mayor said, that we are celebrating a fiftieth anniversary for our show. It's postponed from the 2020. So actually twenty-third, well, actually fifty-third, but we are celebrating fiftieth anniversary. And so the city, Cupertino city is cosponsoring, so please all comes to our show. And everyone, please come to our show because it's free, and then you can stay as much as you want. It's starting from ten, and then four-thirty will be closing for both days, March fourth and the fifth.
It really is the most beautiful Iqibana showcases that you could imagine. We are really lucky to have Ms. Fusako right here in our district. Let's put in the middle. Thank you so much. We're so lucky to have you. See if you have ever seen it. It's beautiful. Thank you so much. Okay, so we are moving into postponement and order of the day. Do we have any postponement order of the day?
No, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Now we're into oral communications. Because we have the new procedures in place, I'd like to remind the public that if you like to make oral communications, including the information items in the back of the agenda, you can make oral communication here, right here in, on the back of the agenda of information items. Another reminder is when we go to item number ten, the grand jury report, because this is continuing item from the last city council meeting, the staff report, the council already asked questions and public comments already been done. So if you have more comments on that, you can also make it right here at oral communication. Madam sitting clerk, do we have, how many cards do we have?
Yes, Mayor. We have five speaker cards in-house and three people with their hands raised.
Okay, so we'd like to start with in-house first?
Okay.
Thank you.
And as a reminder, I don't, I don't think you mentioned it, Mayor. Please have your hands raised and, or your speaker cards submitted in the next nine minutes. First speaker is Connie Cunningham, followed by Jennifer Griffin, followed by Don Halsey. Welcome, Connie.
Okay, I'm not quite ready. Do you mind calling me in a couple of minutes? This is not quite up. Thank you for the-
Okay, we'll move on with Jennifer Griffin, followed by Don Halsey, followed by Richard Mellinger.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Griffin. I've never seen anything like this in twenty-three years, where the public is supposed to compress everything that they want to talk about in their city council meetings. Their city council meetings, the public city council meetings, not the staff, not the elected. You all are elected. You serve at the pleasure of the public. I never thought that I'd be pushed, having to talk to everything on this agenda in three minutes, but I'm going to do it because I have twenty-three years. And yes, I had parliamentary in high school, I had at Deans College, and I had it at San Jose State. I know parliamentary law. Okay, we're going to talk about builder's remedy. Right now, builder's remedy is threatening, intimidating cities across this state. Los Altos Hills has three builder's remedies that have been submitted, and they got their housing element in on time. So what does that say about intimidation? A city does everything that the HCD and the governor wants them, and they're still threatened with builder's remedy. One of them is above Deans Foothill College in an area that was evacuated almost last summer because of wildfire. I, I won't even go on at any further. Okay, so let's talk about grand jury. I'm really, really concerned about this because, okay, I'm doing pretty good. I've got one minute and thirty-one seconds. All right, number ten, grand jury. I'm really, really concerned that this was a setup. I have great respect for grand jury, but who wrote the letters to complain, to, to abuse some of our elected representatives? I, I'm really, really concerned about this. Also, I still don't know what about the square footage at Main Street, number thirteen. I don't know what an informational item is. I haven't been able to talk about it. So I'm going to talk about it, and if somebody wants to shut me up, they can. I sat for five years on the deliberations for Main Street. There were, we all put our time in, okay? Yes. But what happens is that now, all of a sudden, we want to up the restaurant quota. Well, I'm, I'm sorry, Main Street was floated on the idea that we were replacing retail that was lost at Valco, destroyed at Valco. So no, you want to put more, I, I don't, I tried to shop in Cupertino, but frankly, it's a hassle. There's a beautiful new Target store in Scotts Valley, and I shop there. I avoid Cupertino shopping as much as possible because there's no retail. You know, I'm sorry, I've got nine seconds, but I have never in my life seen anything like what happened to our agenda, et cetera, et cetera, in the last two months. What are you all going to do in twelve months? Thank you.
Okay, I have Don Halsey, followed by Richard Mellinger, followed by Lisa Warren.
I did figure it out.
Are you ready now? Okay, so Connie's-
I'm just wondering, though, if I could just ask, there was the grand jury report item, and then there's oral communications. Is that two separate things? I can talk about the grand jury report first and then do oral communications later, or how?
The grand jury is a continuing item. The public comment is, has been done, so you can talk right here in the oral communications.
Okay. I guess I was going to do oral communications on something else. So that would take the whole three time, minutes, so maybe I'll just do that. Okay, so for oral communications, what I wanted to speak, good evening, Mayor Way, Vice Mayor Mohan, and council members. My name is Connie Cunningham. I'm a longtime resident of Cupertino. I'm a member of the Housing Commission, speaking for myself only. Sadly, we are still recovering from prior leadership that has greatly damaged our reputation, including the past actions of Planning Commissioner R. Wang. I am here to urge council to remove R. Wang. All commissioners are required to follow the guidelines and rules in the Commissioner's Handbook dated 2021 and the Code of Ethics referenced to it dated 2020. Commissioners are required to avoid directing or prioritizing work for departments or individual staff. Commissioners are required to refrain from abusive conduct, personal charges, or verbal attacks on the character or motives of others, including members of the staff. In two separate instances, I have personally witnessed and recorded in writing or video R. Wang violating these policies. After I finish speaking, I will send to council the emails and videos of those violations. On February seventeenth, 2021, then-chair of the Planning Commission, R. Wang, sent an email to the city manager and copied four of the council members at that time, Darcy Paul, Yang Chow, Kitty Moore, and John Willie. In this email, he made a formal complaint with a highly-placed staff member. This formal complaint was his opinion about the character and motives of that staff member at commission meeting. He did not limit himself to actions at the meeting, but went on to hope that their actions did not represent how the staff member might feel about other people, including residents. R. Wang, then-chair, took a public and hostile position on a matter that should have been discussed in a private meeting with the mayor. discussed in a private meeting with the mayor. Even though not an addressee, I saw this email because council member Liang Chao forwarded that message on that very day, or the very next day, to all housing commissioners, asking for our opinion of how this staff member treated us when discussing the same agenda item at our meeting. Therefore, five other people were part of something that was not intended for them. Tessa Parrish, Govintata Cherry, Siva Gondikota, Sue Bozey, and I, Sue Bozey and I, were all on that email. Liang said that she hadn't heard from any of us about this issue. She said then that the council couldn't do anything about this kind of behavior if we didn't bring it up to the council in writing. I replied in writing that our meeting went very well. I then wrote to the manager with copies of Liang Chao's email and advised them that I thought the staff member was professional and that I was impressed with them, as well as all city staff with whom I'd had pleasure to interact. A year later, May 24th, 2022, I witnessed a rant from R. Wang at a, Wang, excuse me, at a planning commission meeting, and I attended as a resident. Several times during that meeting, he devalued the work of several people working on the housing element site selection. After being advised by the city attorney that the agenda was on the site selection on a performance appraisal, R. Wang talked over the attorney while he was talking and several times thereafter. Again, gave his negative opinion on performance, loud and hostile. In writing, I notified all council members with clips of the video. I received a comment from council member Moore. She said that Wang's frustration with the process was duly noted. No action. Also, Moore said that I was leveling accusations on the city council and that she wanted to be sure I have facts. The accusation about delays of process is abundantly documented, so I'm comfortable with my comments then and now. Please remove R. Wang from the planning commission.
Thank you, Connie.
Thank you.
Next, we have Don Halsey, followed by Richard Mellinger, followed by Lisa Warren. Welcome, Don.
Thank you.
And I understand you have a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilpersons, City Manager, City Attorney, folks in the audience. I'm Don Halsey, representing the Friends of Blackberry Farm Golf, but I'm here to talk about biodiversity. Interesting. Okay, there's, there's a gremlin here. In prior meetings, there was a lady who spoke of bluebirds, red-tailed hogs, blue herons at Blackberry Farm. She said they were there. Another person commented to the city council last meeting, what can the city council do to increase biodiversity and conserve water? We're going to address those questions. In the prior time I was up here, I presented to scholarly studies that showed that golf courses are more biodiverse than neighboring green spaces. Two different studies, the golf courses won every time. Now, let's bring it back to local. You know, maybe that doesn't apply. We'll find out. There's a little trigger warning here, it's because there are some cute young animal photos, in case that emotionally affects some people, just avert your eyes. One of the folks who plays golf regularly at the Blackberry Farm is a nature photographer, and he's provided, these are the bluebirds that the lady talked about, okay? They're actually getting established there. This is the 2022 crop. Here's the 2021 crop. You know, you can see another ones of the little chicks in there. So that's the bluebirds. Over here, you'll see on the top left is the, the red-tailed hawk and several of the blue heron. So we see now those birds that she talked about, but that's not all. There's coyotes and skunks and pheasants and deer, lots of biodiversity there. And that's not all. That's another kind of nighthawk here, a possum, and the deer. We got plenty of biodiversity at the golf course. So we can still make it more. This is a graph of the water level in the reservoir at Stevens Creek. It's pretty low, okay, compared to the capacity. Goes up in January, comes down, goes up in January, comes down. It got so high this January, we hit 90%, and they started flushing out water into the bay. That's a terrible waste of water. So what should we do? We should fill the ponds at the golf course, which brings back the wildlife, and the ponds percolate into the aquifer, which is low, and we need to raise it up. It's a win-win. This is what we used to have, these birds on the lakes, and these are some coots and others, and you had the wood duck, this murgathaler, or what it is, mergansers.
Thank you, Don, that is your time.
Is it?
Yes.
Okay, so I'd just say, keep the golf course, bring back the ponds, and if it ain't broke, don't fix it. Thank you.
Thank you. And so we have four speaker cards in-house, and we have eight people who had their hands raised within the nine-minute cutoff. So just a time check, Mayor, that'll bring us to an additional 36 minutes, and we've spent about 12 minutes. So based on the council procedures handbook, you may choose to cutoff at the 30-minute time, or do you, do you want to go the full 48 minutes that we have? So I should say 36 minutes left remaining with all the speakers with their hands raised.
I think let them go.
Okay. So Richard Mellinger, followed by Lisa Warren, followed by Rhoda Frye. I'll have speaker cards submitted. Welcome, Richard.
Good evening, Mayor Way and honorable council members. My name is Richard Mellinger. You received a letter from me earlier today. I have the profound honor to serve as council member for the city of Sunnyvale District Five, though I wish to state very clearly that I'm speaking solely on my own behalf and not that of the city of Sunnyvale or any other organization. In 2019, I wrote a tweet criticizing Planning Commission Chair Ray Wong for writing a next-door post calling on residents to, quote, "Save the suburbs from an onslaught of anarchists and yimby neoliberal fascists." I found this amusing, as anarchists, neoliberals, and fascists, if you put them in a room together, that's what's called a brawl. Wang responded to my tweet on next door by saying, "Well, that's fun, smiley face. We'll have to talk to Richard's employer." He went on, "Next time you get harassed by a yimby, track down their employer and send their HR, legal, and CEO a letter outlining their yimby stance in all their tweets, their digital and social comms to show their lack of civility. It goes a long way to getting them reprimanded and, in some cases, a dose of reality." Despite extensive reporting, no action was taken as a result of these comments by the Cupertino City Council. In 2003, Wang had pled no contest to sexual harassment charges for subscribing then-Redwood City Planning Commissioner and future mayor Roseanne Faust internet pornography. When this became apparent, Mr., it appeared at the time that Mr. Wang was in a dispute with her over a proposed water recycling plant and was seeking to discredit her. When contacted by the press over this incident, he stated, "I believe developer interests for recycled water hacked my network and allegedly framed me." Despite extensive reporting, no action was taken by the Cupertino City Council. Not long after this incident, Mr. Wang again found himself in the news, this time for threatening yet another critic with a frivolous defamation suit. Yet again, no action was taken by the Cupertino City Council. But in 2021, despite this track record of bad behavior, this Cupertino City Council voted to reappoint Mr. Wang to the Planning Commission. Ray Wong's actions constitute a clear pattern of behavior. This is a man who consistently and habitually seeks to intimidate his critics into silence. His behavior creates a chilling effect on freedom of speech within Cupertino and the region, where those upset about the actions of their government and public officials must now weigh whether speaking out is worth the risk of harassment, lawsuits, and job termination. Worse, he has made a mockery of his oath of office to uphold the Constitution by actively seeking to suppress freedom of speech, the core freedom on which our democracy is built. That is why I'm here tonight. I am calling on you, the city council of Cupertino, to rectify your predecessors' errors and to uphold the oaths which you have all sworn. I ask you to immediately begin proceedings to remove Ray Wong from office. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Richard. Next, we have Lisa Warren, followed by Rhoda Frye, followed by Neil Park McLintock. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you. So I was pleased to see Forrest Williams here tonight, and it reminded me, and this is a good time to say it, the first time I met him, he was a city council member in San Jose, it was about 25 years ago, I believe, around about. And a quote that I use often that came from Mr. Williams is, "A good project in the wrong place is a bad project." And I use it, some of you have heard it before, but seeing him reminded me to just say it once again. So I, City Clerk, can you pull up the, what I sent you, please? So I'm going to be speaking about an informational item, the Main Street item, and I have lots of comments that can come later or I can send in, but I just want to make this public that the proposed, there's a proposal that's being studied, and the proposed thing is, a proposed entertainment use replacing the former Target building, the Main Street Mixed-Use Center, has proposed to replace the now-vagant Target space with a new entertainment use. This is straight from a draft report from a consultant. The entertainment may use, sorry, including bowling, indoor golf, electric shuffleboard, ping-pong tables, and/or pool tables. In addition to the entertainment activities, the space would include 2,500 square feet of dining and 3,850 square feet of bar or lounge space. The total square footage of the tenant space is 21,380. I thought it was closer to 2,200, but that's just a snippet from the 20-some-odd pages that are in a report from the consultant to consider this. And I have many reasons why this is misplaced, and I can send things later since I don't have much time, but if this moves forward to anything, well, hopefully it will come to Planning Commission and City Council, because it's been going on since before May, and the only reason we heard about it is because a council member requested information about it, and that's why it was an information memo, which we now can't speak to. So I think people need to remember what Main Street was meant to be, what Main Street was sold to be, the immense participation by the community that you people beg for all the time. Why don't we hear from anybody? Why don't we hear from anybody? Nobody's participating, we can't get them engaged. There were, Quinlan Center Community Room was full of people at roundtables discussing this project. There was compromises made, which I'll remind you, you've all been asked to do, and it's been in your workshop, your procedural workshop, and I'm not seeing it. And I, by the way, thank.
Thank you, Lisa.
Councilmember Chow for bringing that up at the end of last meeting.
And next we have.
I got sidetracked, but you get what I mean.
Next, we have Rhoda Frye, followed by Neil Park McLintock. Welcome, Rhoda.
Good evening, council members. In 2000, I'm going to take a step back in history, as I somehow sometimes do, because I've been a Cupertino resident for 40 years, and I faithfully read the general plan. In 2006, the Planning Department recommended, and this was upheld by the Planning Commission, to not allow Public Storage to replace its one-story building with a three-story project that would be three times the existing footprint. Sometime around 2016, that building was replaced by a four-story building and having about a four-fold footprint. The reason for its rejection is because that area called the North Deans, a special area, doesn't have public storage as one of its uses, self-storage, I should say. And in other words, putting in a self-storage there was, was an intensification of a non-conforming use. So now we have this very large building, and it was supposed to resemble an office building, and it doesn't. On one side, it's very nondescript, it looks kind of like a warehouse perhaps, and on the other side, I would say it looks like a penitentiary. It's, it has these orange blobs on it and orange doors. It's been illuminated at night, and now adding insult to injury, there is a plan, which unfortunately you voted for on February 7, to erect a large illuminated sign. So we're not allowed to show plans here, so I, I kind of came up with a visual here so you can get an idea as to the size. So this is, would be about 51.4 feet. You might have seen me tape off this building while, this evening. The width of this room is about 51 point, 51 or so feet. The height of that sign would be 11 and a half feet. I'm probably going to bend my ruler here, but there we go. So I can't even get it. Imagine somebody who's about maybe six foot seven standing on my shoulders, and that's how high it would be. The fact of the matter is, is you weren't told how big this sign would be, because they only gave you the area of the sign. Here's, here's the building on the freeway. The other thing that you were not told is that it would directly face residents. You have now heard from maybe a dozen or so of these residents, some who are worried about their children, because they would be subject to the illumination until 11 o'clock at night. Many of these residents do not have English as their first language. Many of them are renters. Many of them aren't even voters. They don't think they have a voice. So I'm hoping to speak for them. So I'm asking you to please.
Thank you, Rhoda, that is your time.
Not allow this sign. Thank you.
And our final speaker, who had a speaker card submitted in Community Hall in the first nine minutes, Neil Park McLintock. Welcome, Neil.
Thank you. Hello, Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Neil Park McLintock. I'm a Cupertino resident and also the president of Cupertino for All. I grew up here as a child, a teenager, and now an adult. This community means a lot to me, and because of this, I believe we are home to some of the brightest and most compassionate minds in the state. Unfortunately, we are also still recovering from prior leadership mistakes that have greatly damaged our reputation, including the past actions of Planning Commissioner R. Wang. And that is why I'm here today to voice my strong support for the removal of Planning Commissioner R. Wang. I just want to share that when I came up here to decide to, whether or not to speak, to call accountability for this Planning Commissioner, I realized I was scared to speak up for fear that he might seek personal vengeance on myself or others who are speaking up today, like he did for council member Mellinger or against Roseanne Faust. This is simply not someone who should be in a position of power. Community members should not be scared to speak up for fear that they might be personally attacked, that their livelihood might be damaged. And I want that to just sit in the minds of council members today, because this is someone who has been in one of the highest positions of power in the city for years. Residents have come and spoken up, demanded action, and nothing has been done. For Cupertino and our democracy to truly move forward, to be open, to be fair, where all voices feel valued and respected, we must also hold our appointed officials accountable for their past actions. And that's why Cupertino voices are demanding the removal of Planning Commissioner R. Wang, who has repeatedly abused his position of power to harass residents and even leaders in the community. Our officials should ethically represent the people of Cupertino, but Commissioner Wang has repeatedly shown concerning past behavior that is not what is expected of our leaders in Cupertino. He continually sexually harassed a city council member in Redwood City, who was a Planning Commissioner at the time, signing her up for pornographic content, and instead of admitting the truth, owning up to his mistakes, he said that developer interests hacked his computer. That's what happened, that's what he said, and this is someone who's on the Planning Commission. This is simply unacceptable. He avoided trial on felony identity theft charges and pled no contest to a cyber stalking misdemeanor for which he was originally given a custodial sentence. Commissioner Wang also spreads rampant misinformation. For example, when the city sought to fix a density bonus ordinance to comply with state law, he compared it to the free and democratic elections in the Soviet Union. He also said that homelessness was a conspiracy that was manufactured by some individuals. This is not someone who should be on the most powerful bodies in Cupertino, let alone making decisions about housing. Let's move forward with decency and leadership, and I hope the city council considers removing Planning Commissioner R. Wang. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Neil. And Mayor, as I mentioned earlier, as per the new council handbook rules, moral communications is limited to 30 minutes unless the council wishes to choose to extend it past 30 minutes or move the remaining speakers to the end of the agenda. We are, we've. We are, we've, 21 minutes have elapsed and we have eight speakers on Zoom. So that would be an additional 24 minutes.
What's the pleasure of the council? City Attorney.
Yes, just to clarify, per rule, you know, at 30 minutes, there will be an opportunity to speak at the end of the agenda.
Okay.
Council can vote by motion to suspend the rules and allow comment to continue.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the council?
I'll move that we suspend the rules and allow comment to continue.
Do we have a second? Second, let's vote by light.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you, Madam City Clerk. Please proceed.
Okay, so we will move to Zoom. We have eight speakers that had their hands raised within the nine-minute cutoff. So first we have Dinesha Tekmansky, followed by Peggy Griffin, followed by Tessa Parish. Welcome, Dinesha.
Hi, can, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good evening. My name is Dinesha Tekmansky. I'm a 30-year Cupertino resident. I wanted to voice my disappointment with the February 7 council vote to allow the 600-square-foot, non-conforming, bright orange illuminated public storage sign. It's three times over our city's 200-square-foot limit. And it's on C-N-C-280. I, I think that the measurements given were just of the letters, not the whole sign. The letters are 200 square feet. I think the whole sign is 600 square feet, if I understand correctly. I know the mayor said the council's hands were tied in this approval. And I'm not quite sure why that would be. Was council made aware of the actual size of the sign? Or that they didn't even have to vote for one of the two sign options? Or that the self-storage building was rejected the first time around for non-compliance with our general plan? And then later approved with the understanding that both the building and signage needed to be compatible with the aesthetic character of the surrounding area? And it should be designed to protect residents from light and visually intrusive effects? That was the agreement. Now they've come back with this huge sign down the road. There's no other signage like this along our city's frontage of 280. I know the Cupertino Hotel has signage, but it's a lot smaller. It's dimmer. It's separated by an island with trees, an on-ramp, a freeway overpass from the south, and additional roads and trees next to the hotel. So, you know, it's pretty tasteful and not visible to the neighbors at all. So, but the proposed self-storage sign, I see that as really an injustice to the people who live in the development straight across the freeway. Because they're going to have to look at those glaring orange lights in their windows at night. Not to mention, it's just ugly. I mean, the building's ugly as it is. I've driven by it a couple of times at night. And it just doesn't fit in. Why are we going to make this worse? So finally, I wanted the council to consider that by allowing this huge bright sign, that they're setting a precedent for another upcoming development with a sizable amount of freeway frontage as well. And I can just see, we're talking about Valco. I can just see Valco's glaring office park and apartment rental signs now. So please don't allow the self-storage sign. It's really out of character for our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Dinesha. Next we have Peggy Griffin, followed by Tessa Parish, followed by Kamya Masyan. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, council members and staff. First, these attacks on Commissioner Wang are very politically timed with a political agenda. This is a coordinated attack, as you can see. They all showed up tonight. Their plan changed the majority of the Planning Commission. This gets the further agenda. This is another step to remove, destroy, anything the previous council has accomplished. Commissioner Wang is very knowledgeable, understanding, and very familiar with our codes. It's a political attack. Ignore it. Second, informational item 13, Main Street, square footage. I want to thank Gian Martir for taking time to speak with me today regarding Main Street. Gian's update does not mention that an application has been submitted by the property owner requesting a change to the restaurant percentage so they can put entertainment, not retail, where the old Target Express was located. As a result of this request, the conditions of approval, the parking and traffic analysis is being finished. It's supposed to include traffic too, but it's not clear it will. After this traffic analysis, an addendum to the EIR will be done. But the public has no input. This EIR should include the Valco SB 35 project, the two Apple buildings near Lawrence, and any proposed development nearby. It's not clear that it will. The public will not be notified of any of this until the change in use permit is brought to the Planning Commission and the City Council. For those living in the metropolitan or within 300 feet of the property line, you will be notified when this comes to them. I suggest that all of those interested in this development contact city staff periodically to find out what's going on. Don't wait for this notice. And as a informational item 12, monthly treasurer's report for December 2022, the monthly treasurer's report is required by law to be sent to the city clerk and the city council regularly every month. The city has just become compliant last year. But in the recent months, it appears to me that the city is no longer compliant. I have two questions. Is the city no longer compliant with this law? I don't have proof that it is. What is the city doing to fix this? Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Next we have Tessa Parish, followed by Kamya Masyan, followed by Deborah Timmers. Welcome, Tessa.
Hi, good evening. And thank you for the opportunity to speak. First of all, I just want to say, I am not, I'm very displeased to add the procedural manual. And I mean, from the public's perspective, it really looks like there's strategically coordinated efforts to cut the public out of the governance of the city. And with, it seems to be with an agenda. First, we cut the comments. Connie couldn't speak on an item because it's no longer being spoken on the response for the grand jury, civil grand jury, et cetera. So that's number one. I really urge you, this is a comment to change it in the next time it's reviewed. Second, I couldn't believe the coordinated effort against Commissioner Wang. I, so first of all, he's a public official, the gentleman that spoke previously. He is aware of freedom of speech. And I've seen worst rants from other people on Nextdoor and elsewhere. There's freedom of speech. But what he said tonight is possibly, and the other gentleman, libel and defamation. Because a sexual harassment never occurred. And that was supposed to be a sealed settlement. With, when you make a settlement, and the people that know this and are familiar with attorney-in-law, as at least one member there of your council, that should have been sealed and that should have not been disclosed. And now it's being used against him 20 years later? It's unbelievable. The coordinated effort is really obvious that it seems, at least to some of us, as a coordinated effort to remove from Planning Commission. I mean, what a coincidence, right? Considering Valco and whatever, everything else that's happening. The next thing was last week, the grand civil, the response, one of the speakers suggested that you not make any corrections or that you say that you're in disagreement with it, as if the truth did not matter. I was appalled. And we're, you know, as, we're all doing the ethics course. And you're all obligated to uphold fair and truth. And this response should reflect that. We, they deserve that. What if someone called and reported one of you? And you had no chance to respond to it? And what if the council just decided to do that to you? I just want to say, this does not look good. I would like more truth in the response. And I don't, some of it just is incomplete from personal knowledge. Thank you.
Thank you, Tessa. Next we have Kamya Masyan, followed by Deborah Timmers, followed by Jennifer Sharon. Welcome, Kamya.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. My name is Kamya Masyan. And I wanted to begin by expressing my appreciation for the recent steps taken by the City Council to uphold good governance and promote kindness and decency at City Hall. However, I believe that this work will be incomplete without addressing an oversight made by the previous council. Several speakers have already addressed the serious breaches made by Planning Commissioner R. Wong, which the prior council failed to take action on. I am asking that the current council correct this and remove R. Wong from the Planning Commission. I don't think I have much to add substantively. I think many of the points, why I believe this have already been made. But I would add that I dispute the allegation that this is politically motivated. I personally have major policy disagreements with several members of the Planning Commission. But I believe that the attacks that Mr. Wong makes against public participation go beyond simple disagreements. I think that this is, this is more, this is about standing up for kindness and about doing the right thing and holding people accountable. I urge the council to take prompt action on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Kamya. Next we have Deborah Timmers, followed by Jennifer Sharon, followed by San Ar. Welcome, Deborah.
Thank you, Mayor Way, and honorable council members. I'm Debbie Timmers, and I'm a homeowner in Cupertino. And I have two grandchildren that attend public school here. And I love our community. Our city reflects some of the greatest minds and innovativeness in the world. And I agree with many of the others who have spoken that we need to remove R. Wong. He is a troll on Nextdoor. And if you share an opinion contrary to his, he will attack you. And I have been the brunt of that. He may say, speaking for myself, but it's hard to believe that when you see the way he has excoriated staff at Planning Commission meetings. Or the way he's tried to get pro-housing people fired from their jobs. These aren't freedom of speech things. This reflects abuse. This is not the way we want the people representing us to act. And like Neil, I'm not really comfortable even talking about this because I'm afraid maybe I will be criticized for sharing all of these thoughts that I have. But I am motivated because I realize that I am timid about sharing thoughts during public comment period. As I am scared I'll be attacked for having the wrong opinion. And that we shouldn't have to feel that way. And from the last election, it seems at least half of the residents probably have different opinions than he does. And we need to be heard respectfully as well. So please, can we consider removing this person and replacing him with someone that is more respectful of all residents, not just those that agree with him, her, or them? Instead, let's work together to make Cupertino the best it can be based on the wonderful diversity of opinions we have. We don't have to agree on everything, but we must work together and not against each other. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Deborah. And our final three speakers who had their hand raised within the nine-minute cutoff are Jennifer Sharon, San Ar, and Philip Nguyen. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, Mayor Way and council members. I apologize, I have a bit of a cold. So I'm speaking tonight as a resident of Cupertino only. Though there are many items in the grand jury report that are of great cause of concern and require attention, I specifically wish to speak on two issues. I am concerned by the rhetoric that I keep hearing from two of our council members and some speakers about how the grand jury report is just opinion, ignoring that the witnesses must state the truth and that the report should be ignored as it's wrong. We need to accept what the report says, including, quote, "A careful review of several recorded city council meetings confirm the existence of adversarial and dysfunctional behavior towards city staff exhibited by some city council members." Second, I continue to be concerned about the lack of mechanism for reporting and enforcement of the Code of Ethics for council members. In the report, the only mechanism noted by the staff for ethics concerns for council members is, quote, "Council members answer to voters if behavior and conduct is unacceptable." Pretty much that leaves us with no recourse other than to complain at oral communication. I had not planned to talk about this. But I also want to agree with what some previous speakers said about Commissioner Wang. I personally, my own person, have received attacks on social media, including receiving a lawsuit threat and a direct message from him. I do have screenshots of these. As I mentioned at a previous meeting, I did not find the ethics code online and was not able to do anything about it, knowing he had been reappointed recently and was popular with the previous council. It's not political. It's not political. It's a pattern of unethical behavior by a sitting commissioner that should have been addressed previously and wasn't. I ask, like the previous speakers who I just heard tonight, that you do something about it. Thank you for considering these concerns and for your work on behalf of Cupertino.
Thank you, Jennifer. Our final two speakers are San Ar and Philip Nguyen. Welcome, Sam.
Good evening, Mayor Way and City Council. I would like to request you to please reconsider the approval of the signage for I-280. The signage is going to be an eyesore for the community. It is a distraction for driving. As you know, the junction around 280 and 85 is already prone to accidents due to merging that happens as automotives are trying to exit 85, exit 280 on 85. And that area has seen several accidents, especially during peak hour. As we go into winter hours, it's going to be dark by 5:00 p.m. Peak hour traffic is on 280 at that hour. And this signage is going to be a huge distraction, leading to more accidents at that junction. I believe that signage is not in compliance with the sign ordinance. The sign ordinance talks specifically about being in keeping with the surrounding homes and landscaping. That signage will not be in keeping with the surrounding homes and landscaping. The sign ordinance talks about not producing distractions to motorists or nearby residents. And this will do exactly the opposite. I further believe that the decision to approve was made under fairly rushed circumstances. And it was not made clear to all of you that you could approve for zero signage. There is no reason in this day and age that a signage is needed to locate a storage facility. People look up these things on Google Maps or Yelp. I urge you to please reconsider and stop the signage from being erected. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. And our final speaker is Philip Nguyen. Welcome, Philip.
Hello, Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Philip, and I am a community member of Cupertino. This community means a lot to me because I've gone to high school as well as community college here. And I believe we are home to some of the brightest and most compassionate minds in California. Unfortunately, we are still recovering from prior leadership that has greatly damaged Cupertino's reputation, including the past actions of Planning Commissioner R. Wong. That is why I'm here today to voice my strong support for the removal of Planning Commissioner R. Wong. Cupertino is a beacon of excellence and a role model for other cities to follow. With a now strong and diverse council and excellent city staff, we are home to some of the brightest and most compassionate minds in California. But again, I wish to voice my support for the removal of Planning Commissioner R. Wong. Community members have a right to voice their concerns with their representatives. Unfortunately, leaders like Commissioner Wong have created a culture of fear and intimidation and a culture of threats because of their past harassment of community members. As well as housing and homelessness is a top issue in the minds of Cupertino residents. As a Planning Commissioner, Wong has a unique opportunity to promote solutions to end homelessness. But instead, he downplays the reality of the housing crisis. And he mentions, quote, "Just, we don't have a housing problem. We have a manufactured homelessness crisis sponsored by some individual," end quote. I believe in I believe in Cupertino and its future, and that's why I'm here, speaking for democracy and for ethical and kind leadership. It's past time for council to hold Commissioner Wang accountable. Please honor the lived experiences of those who have personally harmed by Mr. Wong and do the right thing. Please honor the intelligence and character of our good residents, who deserve a genuine trust in our officials. So, yeah, it's time to bring dignity back to Cupertino. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Philip. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. This concludes the oral communications.
If I may, Mayor.
Yes.
Mr. City Attorney, if you can clarify, of the limited responses that we may make to oral communications, I believe that one of them is to agendize a matter for further discussion in the future. Is that not correct?
Yes, a council member may request that staff bring an item back for discussion on a future agenda.
In that case, then, I would like to request that staff bring back an item for discussion on a future agenda to remove Commissioner Wong from the planning commission with a resolution attached thereto.
City Attorney Jensen, we do need a second for that, right?
Yes, under, under, under council rules, two council members may request a future agenda item be added to the agenda list.
Okay, do we have a second for that? Mayor Way, I'd like to add this to the future agenda as well. Okay, so you're second, council member? I am seconding it. Okay, so it's moved in second. We're going to add it to the second agenda. Okay, so this concludes the oral communications. I'd like to move to consent agenda, consent calendar, which is items from four to nine. City Manager, do we have any pulled items?
Yes, Mayor Way, I believe item five and item six are pulled.
Okay, by?
By Councilmember Chow and Councilmember Moore.
Okay, okay, so, do we have, if we don't have other items being pulled, may I have a motion to approve under number four, seven, eight, and nine on the consent calendar?
So moved.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
It's been moved in second. Please vote by light.
Excuse me. I'm sorry. So, we do need to allow for public comment on the consent calendar before council votes.
That's correct, thank you. Okay, I'd like to open public comment for the consent calendar. City, Madam City Clerk, do we have any cards?
I'll check the blue speaker card that we just received, Mayor, and we have two hands on Zoom.
Okay, so, please proceed.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and start on Zoom with Kartik Jain, followed by Ian Greensides, and a reminder to please have your hand raised or your speaker card submitted in the first nine minutes. Welcome, Kartik.
Hi, I actually wanted to speak about the DOLA, if that's okay. I don't believe it was addressed in the previous section.
Actually, the, the, the opportunity to speak about an item not on the agenda would have been under oral communications, so...
I do believe I submitted my, my hand within the nine minutes, but I was actually on the phone, and so I had to switch on Zoom.
Yes, actually, your hand was not raised in the first nine minutes. I did track that carefully.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so we'll move to Ian Greensides.
Ms.?
Hi, Ian.
Yes.
Were you speaking on consent?
Yes.
Okay, welcome.
All right, thank you for your time, and I just support the consent items, and I also support the removal of R. Wong from the planning commission, and thank you, thank the council for agendizing that.
City Attorney Jensen?
So, you, so, so, yes, so again, that, that item is not on consent, but I believe the speaker is done.
Okay, thank you.
We have one speaker card from Jennifer Griffin, Mayor, regarding item six.
Yes, we've had some very strange comments tonight.
Point of order, Mayor.
I'm going to talk on item six.
Yeah, item, I believe item six was pulled from consent.
Yes.
Yes, it was.
So, we will have public comment when we come to that.
Yes, I requested of one of the city council members today to pull items from the consent calendar, as instructed per the new manual.
Yes.
I'm going to speak on item six. I think it's very, I have a member of my family who passed away.
City Attorney Jensen, could you support?
I believe the speaker is out of order, Mayor.
Yeah, we will have content, items coming up with public comments, because that's been pulled from the consent.
I'm, I'm confused. I thought I was talking about number six.
No, number, number five and six are being pulled.
Yes.
We will, we will, we will have public comment when we talk about it.
I'm not, I want to speak on.
That is number six.
I am, I'm talking.
Right, we, we will come to that item, because it's been pulled. Right now, we are opening public comment for number four, seven, eight, and nine.
I thought we were talking about.
No.
So, Mayor, can I ask the city attorney to clarify something?
Yes.
So, through the mayor, I think the, this is the first day we apply the new council procedures, likely, the public is confused. Maybe you can clarify when they are allowed to talk about item five or six? That might help.
Yeah, so, yeah, so there, there will be, items five and six were pulled from the, items five and six were pulled from the consent calendar. That, when they're heard by council, there'll be an opportunity to provide public comment on those items.
I do believe it's always been the, the rule. It's not in the new rules, so...
So, Mayor, that, then there are no more cards or hands raised.
Okay, so we will close the public comment for a consent calendar, and we'll move to action number 11, number 10, which is consider approval of response to...
Mayor, did you want to take a vote for the items four, seven, eight, nine?
Okay, so we have a motion on the table and to approve consent calendar number four, seven, eight, and nine. Let's vote by light, please.
I have.
On the consent calendar?
Yeah, so, City Attorney, could you please clarify? So, the old procedure is the pulled item will be right after consent. That's when the public will speak on those consent items. But the new procedure, those items are not right after consent. I think this is where the confusion comes from.
Yeah, that, that, that's a good point.
Could you clarify exactly when they can, the order of items that, so they know?
Yes, that's a good point, Councilmember Chow. So, so those items will be heard after the action calendar.
Okay, so, let's vote on the consent calendar four, seven, eight, and nine.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you. So, we are moving to item number 10.
Mayor Way, if I can ask for maybe just a two-minute recess?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay.